I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, February 5th, 2024. Please rise for the pledge.
Public which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Hogan, will you please take role?
Mayor LeKind.
Here.
Mayor Protem King.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Here.
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Romanella.
Here.
Okay, we have, oh, next up, disclosure of conflicts of interest. Anybody on the council with a conflict of interest? Okay, so I'm the only one, I am declaring that I have a conflict of interest, Mr. Cole, as it pertains to the executive session. And I'll be recusing myself from that session.
Yes, Mr. Rare, and your conflict of interest was distributed to council members, also Mayor Protem King and the town clerk, as required by your charter. It was also filed with the Secretary of State.
Okay. All right, before us, we have a consent agenda and an agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Would ask to have number five ordinance, number 24, Tac 2023, an ordinance approving a preliminary final plat unit development for Maverick Monument Junction Lot Number One, Monument Junction West, filing number one, removed from the agenda. Specifically due to the fact that we've never done ordinance for a preliminary final plat. And second, in section two of the proposed ordinance, it says that the town council approves the above identified preliminary final PUD for the property of, meaning the Maverick Station, which the town council never did.
Okay, so we have a motion. We're gonna have a discussion on the, the request to move this to have it removed. Mr. Cole, do you want to explain the reason why we brought this back to the council?
Yeah. This is on the agenda because the applicant has chosen not to go forward. And what we were going to propose when it came up in, in order was that you close the public hearing and that would require a refiling of the application if they wanted to go forward.
And so we would not actually be voting on the ordinance?
That's the proposal.
This could be.
So we, so the public hearing has been opened and continued, and we're required by statute to close it. And this can be based on the fact that the applicant has withdrew the application for the ordinance of stone.
So if I understand right, what we're saying is, is that when we come to this, we are simply going to close the public hearing and then it, do we have to vote on it? That it has been withdrawn or just by closing the public hearing, it, it's automatically ceased? What, what is the procedure, Mr. Cole? Oh, okay.
I want to clarify, this has not been withdrawn. The applicant has not withdrawn the application. They've merely put the application on hold. And because of that hold request, it has been suggested by staff and with the attorney that we put the public hearing close until we hear further notice from the applicant. That is the request for this evening.
But why? Well, it wasn't.
It wasn't ordinance. It's never been dealt with.
Final PUD, which is a, which is a zoning, and that is an ordinance action.
Then why in section two does it state the town council approves the above identified preliminary final PUD when we did not?
That would be a future approval. If that ordinance got approved.
This is not being voted on, correct, Mr. Cole? You're not voting on the ordinance?
That's, that's what's proposed by staff, that you not vote on the ordinance. If you close the.
But we do need to close the public hearings, we've never closed it, yes.
So we're not voting on the ordinance?
You continue. You're gonna, there, you're gonna sign something?
I'm not signing anything. Effectively, what you're requesting is gonna happen, we're just not removing it from the agenda.
It may just be more effective if we discuss this under the agenda item and then you can choose to deal with it however you believe is appropriate.
Okay, so your suggestion is, is that we don't remove it from the agenda, because then we'll never get to it.
That's right. And we'll have an open public hearing without it being continued.
You okay with that? Okay, so any other modifications to the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to make a modification that we move item six D to the consent agenda.
A second.
All right, we've got. Everybody else good with that? Okay, so we're moving six D up to three C. Any other modifications? And I will look for a motion on the modified.
I'll move to approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
Motion is second. And so.
Mayor Protem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Mayor LeKind.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the presentations. First up is El Paso County Loop Project, Loop Water Authority Board of Directors. Can you tell us who you are?
Yes. Mayor LeKind, council members, my name is John Kuzman. Work for a company called American Company, we're an engineering firm. And we are the project planning and workflow manager on behalf of the Loop Water Authority. We were here presenting a few months back. And today, we're really excited to give you an update on the progress that we've made. Next slide, please. So just real quickly, quick reminder, who is the Loop Water Authority? It's four municipal agencies, all in El Paso County, which includes the Cherokee Metropolitan District, Denala Water and Sand, the Town of Monument, and Woodmore Water and Sanitation District Number One, who have formed an authority under a grant from El Paso County to study and advance a project to provide high quality and renewable water for the public here in El Paso County. And that's through an infrastructure project called the Loop Water System. Next slide. Real quickly, the Loop Water System is, it's comprised of conveying flows in Monument and Fountain Creek to the Chilcot Ditch. The Chilcot Ditch then carries those waters into the Calhan Reservoir. And then from Calhan Reservoir, those waters are pumped and conveyed to a treatment facility and pipelines and pump stations back into the northern portions of El Paso County and to each of those four members' water distribution systems. And that's all shown here on this map. This is consistent with what we showed you before. Next slide, please. And so the principal goal today is to give you updates since we last were here in early October. And I'm pleased to say that we've made a significant amount of progress. We have a lot more information to share with you than we did at that time. But that said, we're not at the finish line yet. We are still being very, very thorough, trying to protect the public interest on this critical project. So I'm gonna go through what we've done since we last talked to you. First, we hired a consultant to do what's called an operational model. Basically verifying how the water is conveyed through this infrastructure project, the associated losses, and making sure that before we embark on a project like this, all of the member agencies' water supplies and yields, the water delivered to customers, aligns with the assumptions that were originally put forth in the project. I'm really pleased to say that that model from that consultant has proven that this project is viable for the build out for all four of the member agencies. That consultant made a presentation to representatives of each of the four major, each of the four member agencies in early January to share those results. So those results were made available to all four of the member agencies and board representatives. Second, we've solicited cost opinions, a, a, a cost opinion input from the, what we're calling the engineering and construction community, the water infrastructure community. And that included over 12 different engineering consultants and seven con- constructors. And what that did is it allowed us to take the pulse of the industry following COVID, following material shortages, and following what we believe to be constraints on the labor market. So we could better forecast the total program cost for this infrastructure project. So we feel like our cost estimates are up to date and relevant as a result of that. Third, we had financial modeling done by Piper Sandler. And Piper Sandler's done work for the Town of Monument, and so they're a trusted resource. And what that did was it allowed us to link proposed debt obligations on behalf of the four member agencies to that operational model. So basically linking, basically generating cash flow associated with the program. Excellent. Fourth, we've been really advancing conversations with Colorado Springs Utilities to link the Loop Water Authority project with an indirect potable reuse project that the city, that Colorado Springs Utilities is advancing. And there is a lot of overlap in the infrastructure and the conveyance mo- models for both Springs Utilities and the Loop Water Authority. So much so that we were co-participants in a grant application with the Colorado Water Conservation Board, particularly the Arkansas Basin Roundtable, for the purposes of advancing discussions on the regional benefit of shared infrastructure. Fifth, to advance Springs Utilities indirect potable reuse study, they are looking at different governance models, particularly authorities, for the purposes of considering some of the contractual terms that have been really problematic or challenging when making agreements with Colorado Springs Utilities in the past. Some of those terms include the 25-year contract limitation. And so they are doing their due diligence to evaluate if other governance models make sense when they're trying to broker a broader regional solution like the indirect potable reuse project in conjunction with the Loop Water Authority. So the Loop Water Authority made our legal counsel available for CSU to ask questions and to explore various different governance models. And I'm happy to say there's a workshop tomorrow that Colorado Springs Utilities is hosting to advance these discussions based on these initial discussions that were held with the Loop's attorney. Number six, oh, that, that's, that's number six. What I just said is that there's a workshop tomorrow to advance governance models. Next slide, please. And then finally, I'm pleased to report that we now know for sure that the Loop Water System will not require any third-party agreements with the Southeastern Water Reclamation District, the US Bureau of Reclamation, or in the Pueblo Water, Pueblo Reservoir System. None of the water deliveries are through that existing water resource and delivery mechanism. So really pleased that we've made a lot of progress, but as I said, there's more to come. And we feel like we've really advanced our value proposition, and we want to share that today. Not as a sales presentation, not as a comparison to any other alternatives you're doing. We're here to tell you what we think our value is for the Town of Monument and as a residence. Next slide, please. So we believe our value proposition is really simple. This infrastructure investment will provide value over the entire lifetime of the actual infrastructure investments. Typically, infrastructure investments are at least 50 years in life. And systems like this, proof is in the pudding, they tend to last hundreds of years as they, as they go forward. So here are what we think are the key tenets of our value proposition. Over, once debt financing is paid off, the Loop Water System, we believe, will be able to deliver a long, a lower, longer-term rate to member agencies. So what we're estimating, based on where we're at in our study, is that the combined delivery, operations and maintenance and leasing fee, we're forecasting that to be $8.35 per thousand gallons delivered at the wholesale rate. We are estimating that and comparing it to current rates from Colorado Springs Utilities, their convey, treat, and deliver rate, and also their full service rate. That rate that we're forecasting is less than both of those current rates from Colorado Springs Utilities. Okay, that does not include debt financing. That's the, after all, the debt financing is paid off. As far as debt financing, there are, the, the way the financing agreement for the Loop Water Authority is set up, there will be no pre-operation payments. So until water is delivered through the completed infrastructure, none of the member agencies are gonna be making payments on that infrastructure. So it's capitalized interest that's pushed back and, and the repayment is tied to actual water deliveries and as part of the overall rate. And you'll see those rates in, in, in a couple slides here. Third, the Loop Water Authority is offering member agencies a unique seat at the table in terms of establishing governance input into critical decision-making. Right now, it's equal shares in those, in the decision-making. As the infrastructure and the financing is established, it will be established as a proportionate share relative to agency participation. But there will be a seat at the table in decision-making. Next slide, please. It's important to note, because of the water supply portfolio that member agencies are bringing to this program, there will only be renewable water that will be delivered through this system. So there will be no other mixed water sources. This is 100% renewable solution, which is really nice and contributes to the rate that the Loop is able to charge. This is, as I mentioned, there's no third-party agreements or no longer deliveries tied to the Pueblo Reservoir or the Arkansas River. And so that let, having less complexity in water deliveries makes, for your reusable flows and for other member agencies' reusable flows, there's less losses as a result of that delivery. And there are also no contractual limitations to those alternatives that use those other contracting mechanisms. And then finally, as I mentioned early, once the debt service requires, retires, the total cost will be lower than other alternatives once that debt financing retires. Next slide. So this is a table which summarizes everything I just said in a little bit more concise way. So it's our understanding that Monument is considering participation in this project in, at three levels. 400 acre feet per year, 600 acre feet per year, or 800 acre, acre feet. And so those are shown in the first column and their relative percentage there. And then the cost to deliver that share at the wholesale rate is, is comprised of two elements. One is the debt service. And so for 400 and 800 acre feet, the debt service cost per thousand gallons is $8.18. For delivery of the 600 acre feet, it's a little bit less because we are pushing the boundaries of, of the 400 acre feet investment, that capital investment. So that debt service rate is a little bit lower at 761. The delivery cost outside of the debt service is $8.35 for all three delivery scenarios. And so the total cost to the Town of Monument at this rate, at, at this juncture is between $15.96 and $16.53 while debt service is being paid. Debt service right now is forecasted at a 30-year, 30 years of repayment. And that is forecasted to start in 2027. So no payments till 2027, 30 years of debt service, and the delivery rate during debt service is $16.53. Once that debt service is retired, then you're only paying the delivery fees. And that's the $8.35 here. So, short term, you're heavily, the cost of this program is heavily influenced by debt service. Long term, there is a lot of value in terms of economies of scale. And there's a lot of value in terms of the quality of the water supply portfolio that the Loop Water Authority has garnered and is prepared to deliver. And last slide, I'd like to bring up Amy Latham from, from Cherokee to close out our presentation, and then I'll field questions afterward. Director Latham?
Thank you, John. Councilmembers, thank you very much for giving us some more time. We've been here before and we really appreciate that time. We spend a lot of time together, all of us here, working on this project. And we've been at this now for a good three years. But prior to that, and I should say, even prior to that, in my time in El Paso County as a county commissioner and watching many of the studies that the Pikes Peak Regional Water Authority worked on, that other regional authorities worked on, and so on, and so on, and so, so on. After 15 years or so of working on these kinds of things, I think this is as close as we've ever come to this type of a really sensational regional water agreement. And that's what's so important to us, and that's what really gets us up in the morning on this particular project. Because finally, we really are putting together a regional project that will do a number of different things. You've already heard some of them. What it won't do, it's not designed, this is what it's not. It's not designed to be competitive. It's not trying to out, out, to, to push anybody out of any pipelines. It is, it is not trying to, to pit districts against districts. In fact, it's the exact opposite. What this is, is trying to pull districts together as water providers. We get up in the morning and go to sleep at night working on making sure that the water that we provide to our customers is high-quality, is absolutely uninterrupted, and is sustainable in perpetuity. And what we know right now regionally is Denver Basin water resources are not only becoming much, much more expensive, but in some cases, we see some of those levels dropping. And we know that we have to find other ways to use our water and to bring renewable resources into our customers. So we are working on a project that will allow all of us as water providers, and in this particular case, as this authority has been formed, to maintain our local control, to be in control of our destinies for our customers in terms of our water rates, our dominion and control of the water rights themselves, where we conserve water, where those molecules are allowed to go within El Paso County. And with the Loop, there are no restrictions on where those water molecule, molecules can go. They can be delivered wherever we'd like them to be delivered. We are able to, right now, you know, the players that have been working on this for so many years, we can bring more people in. This is not a get in now or forget it. This is a, whenever you can come in, we can make that work for other providers. We can make provisions for southern entities and eastern entities to be able to either supplement or really convert some of their water supplies. That's critical, because we know what our water supplies look like in El Paso County. After all of these years, we are very, very close to being able to erase the boundaries between us as districts, as water providers, either towns or special districts or whatever we might, however we might have been formed, and whenever we might have been formed. The state's master plan is all about reuse. The emphasis is reuse. And sometimes when we as water providers talk about reuse, people go, what? What do you really mean by that? And we know what we really mean by that. There's, there are molecules of water that are being reused, and they must be in our arid region. This is a project that is critically important for redundancy. There are gonna be other, other projects similar to this, and there should be. That's why we are saying this has never been meant, and we've never meant this to be competitive. We've meant this to supply customers who can't be supplied in other ways with these renewable resources, especially resources that right now, there's no accessibility to get those resources to the customers. So I would just, I just, I don't want to take a long time. I want to, I want to thank you for your patience with us, because I know this has been taking a long time. But we have not been rushing it. We have been going, well, maybe in the world of water, kind of fast, but, you know, still kind of slow. But we have spent so much time with experts and studying and crunching numbers and making absolutely sure that what we are saying can go into this system can actually be taken out of the system and at an affordable rate that we can control without congressional, contractual issues or being subject to outside entities' rate increases or anything like that. There will be another system for that, and that's important and absolutely necessary. But for us, we need that autonomy with the water rights that all of you have. And so we are a little slow, but we thank you that you are allowing us to be thorough and that you're allowing us to put the time into this that's needed. And we know that you all have to make decisions. We hope that you'll hang in there with us as we continue to refine some of this and consider what it can do for the Town of Monument in the long term, just like we're trying to all determine how it can serve our customers in the long term. And again, these are customers all over El Paso County with a number of different ways to come in and a number of different things to take out of this system. And that's what makes this such a unique system. So after all these years that I've been watching this, I'm pretty jazzed that we are getting this close. And so I'm very thankful, again, that you're willing to let us give you another report. And we're gonna continue to hone these numbers. Now, I'm never, ever, ever gonna do math in public. I learned that a long time ago. Yep, and so we can sit in our meetings and I can ask all the dumb questions, but I'm not gonna ask them here. I'm gonna turn it over to our engineers, the, the, the brains of all the operation, to answer some of these technical questions. But I, but we have just spent so much time on this, and we're just so thankful that you're willing to hear us and see this regional project for the, for the, the fruits of the labor that it is. And that's not just in the last three years that we've been, you know, talking about this possibility to actually create a system that can deliver this reuse and first-use water, but also all the years prior to that, to put all these things together and bring them to fruition in a way that we can control our rates and truly be able to answer the questions of our customers. So thank you for your time, and I am gonna step aside and let, let the smarter people answer some of these questions, but we're very, very excited about this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy. I am going to assume we have questions from the council. So we'll start on the other end. Councilmember Abbott? Hang on a second, can, in case the presentation is required, can it be put back up on the screen, please? Thank you.
I took some notes, but it's fine, either way. So we would be paying, just to, to be clear, the 1653 a gallon for 30 years. After the 30 years, it would go down to the eight, eight 53.
A thousand gallons.
A thou, oh, sorry, a thousand gallons. It might as well be, for, sorry, per thousand, okay. And then it would go down to the eight 35 per thousand, okay. Just wanted to make sure I captured that, that's all I have.
Councilmember Chronic?
Ms. Tharnish, could you tell us what the rate would be, or is, rather, per thousand gallons now? And what it might be projected to be? I'm, 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 you, you left your crystal ball upstairs, but if you could kind of give us, I'm just looking for a comparison.
Right, our, our current rate structure is a tiered rate structure. So it all depends on how much water a typical house would use. But for 2024, our rates run between, I want to say, 13. high thirteens to about seventeen and a half, depending on how much water you use.
Per thousand gallons?
Well, that would be per thousand, yes.
Okay.
Our building structure is actually set up by the gallon, but it's an easy conversion, so.
So if I can tack on to that, does that mean that the eight and or sixteen dollars is in addition to our existing rate? Or do our rates get redone to match what is being presented here?
I, I don't believe it gets added. I think the sixteen that we're talking about here is what the wholesale cost of the Loop Water would be. And there would be additional costs a little bit, and we haven't got to that point yet. But just to cover, um, the existing system, to maintain the existing infrastructure. But we haven't got to the point where we know exactly what the rates are going to be. But this is based on what we know going through all the, uh, infrastructure for the Loop system. The, um, the current structure as it is, is, is all inclusive. What we're charging our customers, it includes a base rate, it includes, um, the money we set aside for capital and the actual cost to produce the water, which includes the chemical and the power costs, things like that. So there's a little bit of difference, but overall, if you look at the costs, especially once the debt service is paid off, it's, it just seems like a really good investment for this town going into the future. And we try to project things out to what, where are we going to be when the town is built out? That's what you're trying to get to the goal of, that we have enough water at that point. And then, um, and then we'll take it from there.
At what point do you think that you can come up with a number that allows us to understand what the Monument customers will be paying all in during the debt service repayment period and then afterwards?
I believe we'd have to get a little further along to get, uh, to get the details on that. I can't give you a date.
Going through this for a couple of years already.
I want to let you know a couple of things to Mayor and Council is that I want to make sure I understand this. This is delivering eight hundred acre feet to the town of Monument, right?
Which is presented from four hundred to eight hundred and, uh, there was a slight variation in the delivery, the wholesale delivery rate. But yes, eight hundred was included.
Right. And so we probably don't need that much water. We're doing a study right now to see how much we need. We probably could get away with probably six hundred acre feet. But also, these numbers don't include the Loop getting any grants whatsoever. We've already got five million dollars worth of grants from El Paso County. We're applying and searching for other grants. There's infrastructure grants coming down. Plus also, at the same time, it doesn't include any cash from the town of Monument. And we have a pretty healthy water fund and, uh, two acre.
No questions? Okay, um, I have, uh, another question on top of this related to that. So would, assuming you start tomorrow, what's the total debt that goes into, what's the number of millions of dollars that's to Monument?
So your, I can tell you the total program cost that, uh, we've, we've put forward, that we've established based on engineering and constructor input. So for the four hundred and six hundred acre foot options that are presented here, the total Loop debt right now is a hundred and ten million dollars. That's the, that's the finance, that's what's being financed on behalf of the Loop. For the eight hundred acre foot option, it's a hundred and sixty five million dollars. Those are the capital, those are the different scaled capital investments that would be financed. As the town manager said, that includes no grants and that includes no upfront.
But what, what percentage of the hundred and ten or one sixty five goes to Monument?
It fits in this table, so it depends on your, how much you're buying. So if you're buying thirteen, if you're buying four hundred acre feet, that's thirteen percent of that, of that number. And I'm, I'm, I'll be doing math in public.
No, I get it. So thirteen percent of the one ten or eighteen percent of the six hundred or twenty three percent of the eight hundred acre feet.
Of the hundred, uh, either of the hundred and ten million or of the hundred and sixty five million dollars.
Okay, so, but how much total water is the Loop pushing?
Uh, in the total system?
Yeah.
Yeah, just a little over three thousand acre feet.
Okay, so a hundred and sixty five million is what Monument is going to pay if we want to push eight hundred of that.
Thirteen percent.
So.
We don't, we'd have a percentage of that.
If you did eight hundred, you would be, you'd be financing twenty three percent of the hundred and sixty five million dollars.
Okay, so one sixty five to push three thousand acre feet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarity, you said all the water is going to be from wells. There'll be no blending or mixing from surface water?
It's no well. No, this is, uh, this is.
Well, we're going to get the water from someplace. So where's the water?
This is either, uh, surface water or return flows from effluent discharges at wastewater facilities.
Okay, and so we'll be, the wells will be put to some minimal usage so they don't dry up and go dead, right?
Well, at first, at first we'll, uh, we'll, uh, reduce our well usage as we accept more Loop project water. But as a town grows and builds, there'll be more return flows that go into the system. So it's almost, I don't want to say self fulfilling, but as the town grows over the next twenty, thirty years, it's just that much more flow that will be processed through that Loop system. So it seems to me the economies of scale become even better.
So the Loop water system is only, it's the wholesale portion. What each member agency then does with that portion of the wholesale water in terms of how they deliver that to customers along with their other water supplies, that's each member agency's, uh, uh, goal and responsibility. And so that's, that's what Tom was speaking to for you. But the Loop itself is all, is either delivering surface water or return flows from the wastewater plants which come from any, any well use.
Okay.
And if I could, I, I asked our, our water resource engineer if he could talk just a little bit about the Denver Basin wells and the diminishing returns there and the economic factors. That's certainly not for us to do in terms of your, your whole financial package. But what are the costs of drilling new Denver Basin wells? And any, and the, and the type of continued reliance that is costing districts much, much more money? Because the more we drill, the more interference we have and the more expensive they're becoming. So Kevin, if you could just speak briefly to that, that might be.
Thank you, Amy, for the introduction. I was hoping I wouldn't have to get up here tonight, but here I am. Tom is going to, well, is going to be able to tell you a lot more about your particular situation in the Denver Basin. But as Cherokee Metropolitan District's, uh, Water Resource Engineer, uh, Cherokee has a mixed alluvial well field where wells are only about a hundred, two hundred feet deep, along with the Denver Basin wells that you guys are familiar with that can be over one thousand to two thousand feet deep. And something that our board asked us to do a few years ago was take a look at the relative costs and really nail down how much of every dollar that customers are putting in, uh, to their bills is going to, for example, wire treatment, to new well construction, to electricity on wells, all of the above. And in doing that, we got a really great understanding of how, how much these Denver Basin wells are costing us and how those costs are changing over time. And luckily, we only have about ten percent of our water supplied from the Denver Basin. But what I can tell you is that the cost of maintaining those wells is only going up. There's still plenty of water available, but the, again, the costs are increasing. And it's not just that the water levels are declining, which means you need to spend more on electricity to bring that water up to the surface. It's also that the costs for construction, uh, are increasing dramatically. And there's only a few contractors that can work on those wells and the market's kind of cornered. So, all that being said, those are costs that, um, we're talking about was the cost of rate pairs pay. These Loop, um, bulk sale costs cover a lot of what's currently being spent. Or Cherokee's also looking to replace our Denver Basin wells with these, what we're spending right now in maintaining and drilling new wells, one to two thousand feet deep.
Thank you. Councilmember King or Mayor Procton King?
Yes. Okay, so, um, regarding, regarding the, the, uh, the debt service on this, is there upfront cost or is this a hundred percent financed?
The model that we're putting, that we're putting in front of you today is there is, uh, it, it is all financed by the authority until water is delivering. So it's capitalized interest until delivery. That's the model. And right now, we're forecasting that the, the first deliveries would be in two thousand and twenty seven, at which you would be paying for debt service and delivery fees as part of your total delivery rate at, at that time. So no upfront cash in the current model that's shown right here.
Okay. And then, and then there's a certain amount of, uh, co-mingling, uh, infrastructure with, uh, CSU, correct?
That's.
How's, how does that work out as far as how, how does, how do they get paid off of that?
So there would be, there would be a contract with Colorado Springs Utilities for the portion of you, infrastructure that the Loop is using as part of this system. And right now, that's forecast, forecast to be part of the Southern Delivery System Pipeline and the Bailey Water Treatment Facility. We are actually working with Colorado Springs Utilities right now on a study for the treatability of this water at the Bailey Treatment Facility. I'm not sure if you know this or not, but the Bailey Facility is a, a very large facility. It has excess capacity in that. And so there is room in that system to take the Loop's water through that system, treat it, and then the Loop would then, uh, deliver that, uh, through its pipeline mechanisms back to North El Paso County. So those two components, there would be a contractual agreement in place between the Loop Water Authority and Colorado Springs Utilities for that service provided by CSU. Now, I want to caveat, just, just real quick, I'll let, so interrupt. Right now, Colorado Springs Utilities is considering an authority model, a different governance model that my, that CSU might be a member to, and the Loop Water Authority might be a member too for the purpose of this infrastructure system. I can't say that that's in place. All I can comment on is that there is a meeting tomorrow specifically for that purpose to advance those discussions. So it's either a direct contract with CSU or a contract through this regional authority for the purposes of sharing infrastructure towards greater community goals.
So the water we get metered in and get metered out, so that way it could go over the divide without violating any Pueblo agreements?
That's a very nuanced question. And what I would, what I would say is we've had very open and transparent conversations with Colorado Springs Utilities about deliveries through that system. And we believe we have a strategy for wherever those deliveries, uh, would go in North El Paso County. So it's, it's, it's very early in those discussions, but we, we believe we have a very sound strategy for that.
Cause I mean, obviously it doesn't work for Woodmore if they can't do it.
That's correct.
Right. And so in, in this can supply a hundred to the current, uh, people on the board right now. This could, could supply a hundred percent renewable water to everyone when it's build out?
All four member agencies were asked to provide their build out demands from the Loop Water System. Monument supplied that number, which was eight hundred acre feet. So based on the modeling that's been done, based on thirty plus years of water history, water delivery, calculated losses, uh, scientific principles. Yes, this system can deliver everyone's, uh, build out delivery that was put forward as part of this planning of this project. So for Monument, that was eight hundred acre feet.
Okay. And the, and those water rights currently exist for that, or do they need to be obtained?
No, those water rights exist for that. Those are all existing water rights that would supply that.
And then, uh, so Mr. Foreman, what are we using right now as far as acre feet per year? You know?
Tom.
Or Tom?
Last, uh, based on the last year, we were around four hundred and twenty to four twenty five, depending on expected losses.
Is, is that peak or?
That's our total demand for the year.
Okay. What's, what's peak? What's our peak in the summers?
Our peak typically occurs around July fifteenth to seventeenth at about. I knew we should have brought that number.
Okay.
I want to say around maybe point six, seven hundred thousand on a typical day.
Okay. And so to piggyback on, um, King's question, so this eight hundred acre feet is peak or is it average?
Build out.
No, it's, 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 yes, it's a build out, but there's build out and then there's peak, peak months and, and low months. Peak months happen in the summer, low months happen in the winter. So is eight hundred acre feet the peak summer months or average or?
Eight, eight hundred is our total demand for the year that we, uh, become built out.
Okay.
The peaks would be handled by the current wells we have.
Okay.
So they may come on for different periods for shorter lengths of time than they're currently being run.
Okay. All right. So we are keeping the wells for, for those peak months. Okay.
We're keeping those as a backup and as a, for those peak days.
That's right. Um, what would be the, what do you anticipate? How many years do you think it would take to, to build this out from, starting from today? I mean, I know we've got studies to be completed and other things. I know we're in here early, but just to throw a timeframe dart at it.
The system that we're, uh, that we're presenting to you, the hundred and ten million dollar system requires, uh, infrastructure from Bailey's Water Treatment Facility into the Sundance Pipeline, which is owned by Cherokee right now.
That's that seventeen mile pipe.
That's correct. Uh, I'm not exactly sure of the, uh, it is a, it is a long, multi-mile pipeline, uh, owned and operated by Cherokee. And then there isn't, there would be an extension, uh, sent generally west from the Sundance Pipeline with connection into each member agencies, uh, into, and agency system. So that is the infra, very little infrastructure that's required. There would also be a pipeline, that'd be, uh, pipeline and a pump station that would connect the Calhan Reservoir to the Southern Delivery System Pipeline. We believe that infrastructure can be constructed by two thousand and twenty seven. And so that's what this, that's what this, uh, model is, uh, is forecasting.
I got you. And then I got one last question and I'll not hog the time up. But, um, I had heard somewhere that there was a possibility that Fountain might be interested in doing something with this too.
We have had probably a half dozen discussions with Fountain in, uh, in, during my tenure, uh, in supporting the Loop Authority, uh, and those, those conversations, uh, are, are constantly progressing. They are not a member agency right now. Uh, they are considering a variety of options in this. Uh, and so, but, but they are, they are with, with the Loop in the discussions and, uh, doing their due diligence at this point. And I'd say those conversations are going very well.
Jesse or Jeff, do you want to add anything to those conversations? I think you've, you've been.
Oh, yeah. Jeff Hoss, General Manager for, for Denala. Give you all my background stuff. I had a few water pipelines here and there. But yeah, with, um, with Fountain, we have reached out to them for that. Cause I think that's one of the things that's key that has not really been pointed out here is the scales of economy to yet be happened. You know, we've presented you with a static model with the, the people we have at the table now. You know, the, the other possibilities, just at the eight thirty five, that's what Denala is paying right now for our convey, treat and deliver water from Colorado Springs Utilities. That doesn't include all the debt service and all the other millions of dollars. And probably not a good time to even get me talking about the, uh, third party agreements that have yet to be resolved with our short-term contract, um, with, with CSU and, and the other parties. Uh, but yeah, we are, we are discussing, uh, with those individuals along with other ones. We've had several, even when we first started, some of the developments out east. You know, it's just the, the timing of that. Cause as, as you know, between here and Tamlin, from the southern part to Tamlin Tank, nothing's been constructed yet. So those possibilities would drive that number down. You know, would it, would it increase some of the treatment costs or some of the, the pipe sizes just minimally? It'd be more probably in the pumps, you know? So yeah, we're trying to, to benefit the entire region by having that redundancy and resiliency to, to have those different waters and then convey to our different partners that way. So, um, so yeah, and to be real blunt, yeah, we're meeting with them again Monday more, or excuse me, Wednesday morning to, to further that conversation as to what might work out with this and what permutations would, would be beneficial to get them to the table to hopefully have them as a partner in the very near future.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Can I just add one real quick clarifying? Fountain's connection into the Loop Water System would be in the area that's for the infrastructure that's currently owned.
by Colorado Springs Utility. So I would, from my perspective, if Fountain joins or not, it doesn't fundamentally change the scaling of capital investments for the Loop Water System just because where Fountain physically is in the infrastructure because the Caro Springs Infrastructure, Colorado Springs Utilities Infrastructure has capacity. So the investment in the infrastructure is already there. And so if Fountain came in, they would be bringing money and they would be bringing the ability investment without having to do more capital to to accommodate their participation based on based on what I'm seeing so far. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's good. Thank you.
It's fine. Okay, so just a few questions has or just to be clear. The water we're talking about is only gonna serve and be provided for the west side of I twenty five, not all of Monument, just the west side.
I'm not. I'm not in a position to answer that.
Not not Tri-views District.
No, it would serve the town of Monument's water surface area currently.
Currently. So basically, the west side of I twenty five with some gaps on the east side. Okay.
Yes.
Has so we're talking about this Board of Representatives, representatives, excuse me. Has Cherokee, Denala and Woodmore already signed a pact or an agreement? But Monument hasn't about building this this pipeline and service?
There was an authority formation agreement, which Justin, you want to talk about the the signatures on that? So there is a there's a there's a there's a formation. Then there are subsequent agreements that are coming. So.
Thank you, John. Jesse Schaefer, General Manager, Woodmore Water and Sand. Thank you again for having us here tonight. But Mr. Kimpel, to answer your question, there is no other agreement other than the establishing agreement, the IGA forming the Loop Water Authority. There's no other agreement that as far as I'm aware of, Woodmore or Cherokee and Denala entered into that Monument hasn't. The town of Monument is a full fledged member of the Loop Water Authority. They saying they signed, you guys signed the same IGA as we did and Denala did and Cherokee did, and that's the only agreement currently that exists. Now, we are working on some more internal agreements. There's going to be a contributions and takeout agreement. There's going to probably be an operating agreement if this project moves forward in terms of, you know, how how those things are dealt with and how the costs get allocated in terms of percentages that John showed you here today. But those agreements haven't been finalized, but they are something that we are working on.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
So then with the prior to the payoff of debt, we're talking about fifteen dollars and ninety six cents or sixteen dollars and fifty three cents, depending on the hundreds of acre feet of water. Was that were were those prices? Was that based on thousand gallons? Is that based on a residential home? What what a resident would have to pay per thousand gallons?
No, sir. Those are wholesale delivery rates. So the Loop Authority delivering to the member agencies. So that's what each of the member agencies would be buying from the Loop Authority. Any delivery cost to recover the cost for your existing delivery systems, the ongoing operations and maintenance of that, any sort of system upgrades for the mingling of waters or anything like that? That is not included in in the rate and that's that your staff would have to calculate that. That's not part of the Loop Authority's role.
And let me answer that even more specifically. Both systems, either system we would go to don't include our cost. So if we went with the other system, it wouldn't include our cost. It's just delivery charge to us.
Can I add something to your?
Sure.
Again, back to the question, what is our cost to deliver water today?
We will get that for you. We can't answer that right now. We'll get that for you.
Yes, sir. So just doing some rough calculations. I mean, because I'm the reason why I'm asking about per resident because yeah, there is a lot of people here in the town of Monument on a fixed income. So figuring out these costs for for them, it is it is it is critical to know because what I'm just doing a rough calculation, depending on a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and ten million dollars, a hundred and sixty five million proportional cost is either going to be twenty million or thirty eight million dollars, somewhere in the somewhere in that ballpark for this, for the town of Monument, for this system to be implemented. So and then we break down that talking about the debt payoff and then the cost of delivery of the water. That's that's what I'm trying to figure out from there. Okay.
And and there is, as they said, there is some amount of money that I'm guessing that they would put towards the infrastructure costs, which would reduce the the town's debt.
Yeah.
And that would reduce the cost of the per acre feet, right?
Exactly. That's what I stated.
I'm sitting on four hundred million dollars in two A fund and we're just going to pay cash, right? Got a Groupon or something?
Can always dream, right?
Yeah. Okay.
I'm good.
You're you're good. Okay. So then, since we don't have any other questions. One just real quick question. When do you think that that study that's out there right now will be complete?
With Colorado Springs Utilities?
Well, the 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 study that determines exactly how this is going to work and if it's feasible and what the actual cost will end up being.
It's an interesting, excellent question. There are multiple studies going on. That's why I'm struggling a little bit with that. So there is a broad study with Colorado Springs and the El Paso County Regional Water Authority spawn and the Loop Water Authority to study indirect potable reuse as a global system of which the Loop is part of that. So that's one study. And that I'll I'll be honest with you, that has long term storage studies, including using Colorado Springs Lower Williams Creek Reservoir. So I think that study in the full grandeur of what CSU is planning is probably a couple of years in in making. The nearer time term study to try to get this system operational by two thousand and twenty seven is the Bailey Water Treatment Plant Study, and that will be done early this summer.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your time. I really
Thank you, everybody. All right, next up is interesting people in the Monument Tri-Lakes area. Speaking of interesting people here, come on now.
Not my title.
Is there a presentation on this?
Yes.
Oh, because we didn't, we didn't.
No, it's just a video. It's a four minute video. We're showing it here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I promise mine's a lot less complicated than what you guys just went through. Terry Hayes, Tri-Lakes Chamber of Commerce. I want to first thank you to those who were able to attend our State of the Region on Friday and especially thank you, Mayor LaKine for speaking. If you guys don't read the Gazette, normally, we're going to get covered in the Tribune on the Wednesday on Wednesday, but we made the Gazette too, and your picture was first on front right on it. So I did earlier email it all to you guys, so you can see it.
Did not see it.
So I just want to say thank you for your support and thank you, Mike, too, for the town's support of our event. Onto the interesting people. So I had the privilege to work with a team from UCCS. Their professor, Dr. Colleen Stiles, who was a resident of Monument, came up with the idea and approached me asking if I would assist them in this project. Normally, it would be the UCCS students presenting this, but they graduated in December and it was really hard to get them to agree to come back. So here I am. This was for a class under the UCCS Fall two thousand and twenty three Semester for Bachelor of Innovation. The Bachelor of Innovation includes a mixed variety of majors, including business, computer science, filmmaking, digital media and engineering. The innovative approach to learning applies to real world troubleshooting through multiple electives over all four years of a student's degree path. These various electives fortify the differing studies between Bachelor of Arts, Sciences and the Bachelor of Innovation. I just thought it was really interesting to have a Bachelor of Innovation. That's something new I hadn't heard of. It's made up of a team. The team leads were Danny Tran and Jacob McDeMeyer. And then the team members, I'm going to just say their first names because I can't pronounce a lot of their last names. We have Ella Hunter, Cameron and Luke. And then the supervisors were Dr. Colleen Stiles, which was their professor, and then Ms. Barbara Clemente as faculty. The assignment was to identify within our community members with amazing and unique experiences. These people enrich our community and their experiences would shock their neighbors. Leaders from all over the world have retired here and we want to show them off, including our lifelong residents. Once residents are identified, were identified, the team was tasked to write film, edit and produce a promotional film for the Tri-Lakes area. Our role that we played in this was just guidance. We just introduced them to a few people. We gave them a list about this long. And then it was up to them to shorten it as to who they wanted to cover and who they wanted to talk to. When we watched the video, there is one incorrect reference. We'll see if you see it. I did not have the privilege to see the final. It's like we went through all our stuff. We helped them and they just gave me the final. So there's one little mistake in there, but someone else out of our area may not know it. So the team did put together a thirty two page report on this process. I did not include that in your packets. However, if anybody is super interested in it, I'd be happy to email it to you. And that is it. Any questions before we start the video? It's only like about four minutes long. Hey, Will.
All right. Well, I guess I'll email that to you guys. And then we also will be putting it out on social media. So
Excellent, thank you.
People can see it and stuff, but they cover four or five different local businesses, both here and one. It was just a fun project. I don't know if I'm going to do it again, but I thought it was an opportunity. Anytime we can reproduce, so get some produced that shows people how great we are. I think it's a good thing. So I'll I'll email that to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll load to the website and we upload to the meeting. I'll try to get it there.
Okay, next up, we have a public hearing item. An ordinance that we are going to close out and not vote on. Jeff, would you like to take it from here?
Thank you, Mayor. Basic background. This is regarding the ordinance number twenty four, two thousand and twenty three, an ordinance approving a preliminary final planned unit development for Maverick Monument Junction Lot One, Monument Junction West, file number one. Background, the application for a preliminary final PUD, application for Maverick Monument Junction Lot One, Monument Junction West File Number One, was presented to the Town Council at the December fourth, two thousand and twenty three Town Council Meeting. The Town Council received a packet that included a traffic impact analysis that was not provided to the Planning Commission for the November eighth, two thousand and twenty three Planning Commission Hearing, where the Planning Commission reviewed this PUD application and recommended this application for approval with unanimous decision. Due to the addition of the traffic information for the Town Council and not for the Planning Commission, the Town Council moved the items be sent back to the Planning Commission for further review. Staff informed the applicant, they will need to renotice through Mailer, Signpost and Publishing fifteen days prior for the January tenth, two thousand and twenty four Planning Commission Meeting. January on January eighth, two days before that meeting, the applicant emailed the town and informed staff they are putting the project on hold. January twenty sixth, the applicant reconfirmed that the project is currently on hold. No real discussion item, no real fiscal impact at this point. Staff's finding is due to the request by the applicant wishing to put the project on hold. Staff finds the next appropriate action by the Town Council for the public hearing on this application should be to close the public hearing until further communication from the applicant. Descends staff's report.
Okay. If I recall correctly, when this was originally opened, we actually had testimony being provided by the public as well as the applicant. And therefore, there is no and we we all communicated amongst ourselves. Therefore, there is no reason for us to have any further public comment. I think we closed the comment section at that point. So are we good with just closing the public hearing altogether on this?
This status of on hold is is a little difficult in terms of the public hearing. If they came back with the application and there was any presentation, then you would need to reopen the public hearing. To do that, it would have to be renoticed. We'd have to give the public an opportunity to be here, hear the presentation and comment on it. So I think that's the context then in in closing the public hearing is recognizing that if they come back and want to move forward with this application, they've got to renotice it. You're going to reopen the public hearing. You're going to consider everything previously presented plus anything new and allow the public to participate in the process.
Okay. Well, does that mean that this ordinance number will change if they do if they come back?
We kind of look at what the town's practice has been in the past. It's still pending until they withdraw the application. I suppose the ordinance is still pending. So I I think it would probably retain retain the current ordinance number unless they withdrew the application and refiled.
Okay. And and there must be some timing that this gets to sit out there in this status before there's an expiration and it requires them to start over anyway, right?
Yes, there is a withdrawal period. So at some point, there is an expiration. I cannot give you that specific time right now, but it is in code. And by that point, if we have not heard anything, it is officially withdrawn and it starts over.
Will you will you let us know what that is via email or something on what
Certainly.
date is?
Absolutely. We'll be happy to.
Okay, so if everybody is in agreement, then I'm going to close the public hearing item on ordinance number twenty four dash two thousand and twenty three until the applicant decides to do some withdraw or continue the application.
So Nicole, what kind of if if we did this and they had to reopen it, like why do they have to resubmit an application? What is the cost time wise?
I don't think they'd have to resubmit an application. Time wise, the cost to them, I don't I don't know what it would take to kind of revive it and get notice and all that done. Perhaps Mr. Little Jerron could answer that.
So at this point, we have an active application, but we're putting it on hold. It got as far as to a public hearing. We've closed that public hearing. The applicant has requested the opportunity to hold, see if they can pick it up from where they left it off.
Okay.
But they have a lot ahead of them to do that.
Oh.
The expiration of withdrawal, if that happens, they hit the expiration and it's withdrawn. They are starting completely over and they're doing a new application.
I see. Okay, I just didn't want to. I see. Okay. I just didn't want to, not that I want this to stay open, but to have to go through the gamut all over again. I just needed to find out what that would cost, like time wise cost. Okay.
And Jeff, due to the instructions that the council gave, that this needs to go back to the planning commission to show them the traffic impact study, would this start with the planning commission?
Absolutely. That is correct.
Okay.
They have not gotten it back to them yet. No. So.
That's correct. They have not gone back to the planning commission.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Then we will move on to resolutions. First one, resolution 06, 2024, resolution approving hybrid solution for the self-collection of sales tax for the town of Monument, beginning on the first day of October 2024. Mona?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. And I can share the memo. The town of Monument is a growing home rule municipality since January 1st, 2023. And the town council is recognizing the need for increased insight, coverage, and control over its sales tax revenue process for sustainable development. The town council of the town of Monument has instructed me, Mona Hershoy, Finance Director, to prepare and submit several options to you for review. We facilitated two presentations, one on November 6th, 2023 with the Colorado Department of Revenue. And that presentation went over the current process, which is state collect. And then also on December 4th, we had a presentation with our, with an independent consulting firm, Consult, which she presented three additional solutions and the cost and also the details behind each, each option. Today, we are proposing to, we are bringing to, to your attention resolution, let me see, 06, 2024, to request the town council approve the hybrid solution, which was option number four. And just to remind you, the cost for that solution was 229,000 in the first year of operation. If you want a reminder about the second and third option, the second option was internal staff plus a software, tech software, GovOS. And for one year of operation, 345,000. And the third option was to have 100% third-party administrator, and that option was 457,000. So we are bringing to you the resolution number four, which is the hybrid solution for 229,000 in the first year of operation. And we are asking for the town council to approve. I respectfully request the town council approve of resolution 06, 2024, a hybrid solution for the self, self-collection of sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you. As I've looked through the, the packet that's been provided to me, there are several items on here that have contracts. Is there a contract for this, for the, the relationship with Cosalt, for the software?
No. So the software will be provided from a different company and the company name will be GovOS. We do have an estimate on how much the software costs per year. So it's about 29,000, but we cannot get into any contract unless you are approving to, to do so. We do have a contract with Cosalt. Of course. So just to clarify, would you like me to have a contract with GovOS, which will be the sales tax collection software and the contract with Cosalt to provide us the administration for the sales tax collection?
If they're providing us a service and there's terms and conditions related to it, the council should be able to see a contract that's related to those things before we go and approve a dollar amount to give them without seeing it. The same goes for the, the park equipment. There's no contract. This is the first time I've not seen a contract to sign and the council doesn't have a copy of, of a contract to review. And for a couple of items, well, this, the parks one is a little different. It's got the equipment that we're going to get to. But the software one should have a managed service agreement that. Mr. Cole?
So sections four and five of the resolution indicate that the, the purchases of the services in the, in the four and five. Yes. Are subject to the town's purchasing policy. So if they're over 24,999, town manager can't sign on it. It'll have to come back to you.
Right.
You're just approving, you're just approving. We, we made you presentations on four options. You're approving an option and we will bring the contracts back to you as we negotiate those.
So this resolution is just to adopt a hybrid solution? And then that sets the town staff towards fulfilling that hybrid solution?
This is.
Results in.
This is.
Contract purchases, et cetera.
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
This was, this is them following our direction.
Okay. Any discussion from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 06, 2024, a resolution approving hybrid solution for the self-collection of sales tax for the town of Monument, Colorado, beginning on the first day of October 2024.
Second.
Motion of second.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Lakind?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have resolution 07, 2024, a resolution to approve a contract with CXT for a restroom facility at Monument Lake.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution to provide a restroom facility at our lake. As you know, is currently served by portable restrooms, which especially in the summertime become very full and difficult to maintain. We already have a tap with the Palmer Lake Sanitation District. So this is a, a more permanent and a more sanitary solution as well as a better amenity to have at our lake, a more permanent solution than, rather than the portable restrooms. The town applied for a grant in 2023 from Colorado Parks and Wildlife and we awarded 117,731, which will cover a majority of this facility. And then we did budget for the rest of this project and these funds in our 2024 budget. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about this item.
You have a couple. So we have a tap, so the tap fees are paid? Or it was just a dedicated tap that they gave us?
And when they were, when Palmer Lake Sanitation was installing the new line, the new sewer line, they had to take down one of our pavilions. And so in return, they gave us a tap. So we did not have to pay the tap fees. We do have to pay a monthly service fee though.
Right. So what about the cost to run the line there and the water service line?
That's all included in the rest of the project. We don't, I don't have those exact numbers.
But that's part of this dollar amount that you have on here?
It's part of the 83,000 that we included. This 131, or 133,000 is just for the facility to be delivered and not, not any of the site prep work or any of those other additional costs for construction.
So that comes out of that other 83,000 that was budgeted? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do we have, where is it going to be located? Is it at the, like the, by the parking?
No, if you're coming down from the lake, I, I'm sorry, I don't have a diagram of that. Where the existing pavilion is with the porta potties that are kind of right next to it, it'll be just a little bit to the north there.
Okay. Thank you.
Quick question. The water fountain, will it have the ability to refill water bottles? Or is it just a standard water fountain?
I, you know, I don't know the, the, those details on that. I, I would have to check into that.
Yeah. I, I would, I would love if it's water bottle refillable thing of majiggy thing.
Now, while we're at it, can we change the color?
Thank you.
Any other questions? So this is for a contract. There's no contract in the packet for me.
There was a contract in, in my version that I.
I could see it on my screen. I have nothing to sign. So I have to come in now, right? Or you have it handy? Just asking.
I could probably print one out for you.
No, it's, it's. I'm just trying to avoid having to make multiple trips.
It was, it was in the council packet when I looked at the council packet.
It's all good. It's just not in the, it's all good. All right. Is, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 07, 2024, a resolution to approve a contract with CXT for a restroom facility at Monument Lake.
Second.
We've got a motion and 100 seconds. Ms. Hogan?
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mayor Lakind?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero. Next up, motion for resolution 08, 2024, resolution approving a contract with Star Playgrounds for equipment at Limbach Park. Ms. Van den Hoek, you're up again. And just for the record, since Mr. Cole didn't, I, I did not say anything that can get us in trouble by the purchase of some of this equipment that may cause whiplash.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and Council. As you may remember, you graciously appointed $200,000 to the Parks Department to help us get some new playground equipment. And we determined Limbach Park being our most used park, that this would be the best place to get started with that money. So we are working with Star Playgrounds to effectively spend this money. 200,000 kind of doesn't go very far. So we have some playground surfacing and two pieces of equipment that we're going to be able to purchase with that. However, we did just this past week discover that we might have some additional funds in our budget that I would like to discuss with you to see if you would allow us to make this project even better. We, the money that was supposed to be used to purchase the property just to the west here was budgeted in 2024. However, we had to close in very late 2023. So effectively, we spent that money already in 2023. So now I have an extra 200,000 in my parks budget for 2024. So I feel like we could make our playground a little bit bigger and buy some additional playground equipment with those funds, should council decide that that is a good use of those funds.
Okay. Is this something that you would like to have us continue until you can look at design strategies if we were to agree to have you spend that money on? This is only for Limbach Park, right?
Correct. Yes. We would be working with the same vendor. So we could bring you back a different contract and at the next council meeting with this designer, once we're able to determine what those costs would be to enhance the playground. Or you could just choose to approve this portion tonight.
What is there? Either way.
Is there another park that could use some more equipment as well and do the peanut butter effect?
We have another.
Well, there's.
Well, let me, let me address that real quick. Madeline and, and Erica are working on ensuring that that park meets our SIRS requirements. And there's some ADA requirements there. And so I think we probably, if we're going to invest a lot of money, we need to invest that in there to ensure that we're, we're, next time we get an audit by SIRS, we meet that audit.
As long as we can keep the merry-go-round, we're good.
Like it's going to go.
I don't believe that we can keep that particular merry-go-round. However, we do have a replacement merry-go-round.
Yeah, it's called the, the name of that go. It, it requires insurance policies and.
I'm, I'm leaning towards a comprehensive.
Spin, the unity spin R. I watched the video on it. Okay. It's going to move. It's the whiplash.
I'm good if we do, if we continue this and, and give Madeline time to, to look at a, a comprehensive plan with this vendor.
Sure.
So you're saying not vote for this now?
Yeah, I would say continue it, right? That's a proper term, continue this and.
What, what, what will that do for timing of the build out and the deconstruction of the one, the area that you already want to build?
So we, we, it, it does take a long time to order these. So, but I, my hope is we'd be able to bring you back something on February 20th. So I don't feel like those extra two weeks would really push our timeline back. We're hoping for installation right now in September. So after our event season at Limbach Park and hopefully the weather cooperates and that we can get on their schedule to continue to do this installation in late September.
Okay. Okay. Then I will look for a motion to continue.
Make a motion to continue resolution 08, 2024 to February 20.
Second.
Motion of a second. Ms. Hogan?
Mayor Lakind?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
All right. Well, the motion to continue passes seven to zero. I'm not going to. I guess I'll just hold on to this. All right. Next up is public comment for items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments will be limited to three minutes. And if you're here and you'd like to make a public comment, there should be a signup sheet at the front. Please make sure you fill in your, your name and the relevant contact information should we need to get back in touch with you. So is there anybody here in town hall that would like to make a public comment? Come up here, sir, please. Yep. It's got to come on the record and be recorded.
...for the last 25 years. Some of the concerns I have is with regards to the wave of illegal immigration now in Denver and now some of the concerns that we have with it now spreading south into the Springs and even possibly affecting us here in Monument. And what we are proposing to do or how we're handling this, we're planning to handle this. Are you guys considering this or aware of this? Is there anything you could share with us now at this point?
I can share that there'll be a discussion about this during the council's comments.
Okay.
And so, but it won't be, it'll be a dialogue amongst ourselves.
Okay. And will we know the outcome of this meeting after this?
I mean, yeah, there'll be some resolution to discuss.
Well, that was my only concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Outstanding ball cap, by the way.
Yeah, as opposed to the Thunderbirds, being like the Blue Angels, like that. Under chickens. Sir, do you want to start making your way up? Sir, do you want to start making your way up?
Hi, Mayor Lakind and council members. My name is David Schunder. I'm a resident of the town monument and happy to be a member of this community. I just wanted to voice a concern to go on the record of the use of some old chemical storage tanks in construction on a lot very close to mine that's just across 105 and Crystal Creek. I did bring this up to code enforcement, but I just wanted to put this on the record. Do you need to have the address of this? I believe this is the correct address. And just a couple of concerns, you are, you know, since they were previously used to store chemicals, are they safe to use for us? Is this use within the code of the city? And are there any permits for this? And I just want to try to keep, as we've all said, keep monument beautiful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just to update the council on this, staff is aware of it. We were made aware of it by the mayor. And then PSAs are currently working on this and we'll update you as, as necessary.
Is there anybody else in Town Hall that would like to speak? Okay, is there anybody online, Will, that would like to speak? Okay, then we will close the public comments. Do you have any, oh, one up?
I'm Lynn Tucker. I just wanted to say what a great job the Monument snowplow crew did during this season. I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Tell that guy and tell that guy back in the back there.
It's been wonderful. I was like, I just wanted to say that, that's all.
Thank you.
Appreciate you doing that.
I'm cold.
Okay, do we have any council authorization items? Anybody have any? Yeah, for next time? No? Okay, council comments. All right, so. Well, I can, anybody else have council comments they want to bring up? Okay?
So at some point in, in the near future, hopefully, if we can get like a, an update on status of looking for renewable water purchasing and where we're at with, with, with that. I know we're, last year, we're looking for renewable water options and kind of hunting around. I kind of like to know where we are with that. Second, to piggyback on Ms. Minnesota. I, I have a friend who lives in Colorado Springs, and she said you can always know when you're crossing into Monument because of the road plowed. So I'll piggyback on, on that. I'll, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that. I do have a question, and maybe this is under authorization, so I'll, I'll take any education offers. There was a, a report that was released, I want to say a month ago, I think, on lessons learned from the school shooting in Texas. I forget the, the name of the, of the- Thank you. I don't know if this is an authorization item or just a, a, a comment, but I would love to hear from the police department if they've, if they have access to that report and what any lessons learned that we can, you guys can apply for your operations here in Monument.
Yeah, Councilmember Fiorito, we, I got your email on that, and I sent it to our police chief and I'll let him talk about what our plan is for that.
If you'd like, I could actually put a presentation together to talk about it. But what we learned from Uvalde is that we need to follow the procedures we've had in place since 1999. When I started as a police officer in 2000, it was right on the heels of Call of Mine. And we came up with a plan to address these issues and we just have to stick to the plan. That was, so a lot of issues in that one. I've read the whole report. In fact, there's people that live in the area that were part of the research team. I have a meeting with one of them tomorrow just to get a little bit more detail, but I'd be glad to put a presentation together just if you would like and present here at a council meeting about kind of what happened, how they addressed it, where they might have gone, you know, afoul of our policy, and then what we're doing and how we would address something if it were to happen in our jurisdiction.
I, I would love that. I, I think-
We talked about possibly having that in March, maybe the first or second meeting in March.
That'd be awesome. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Chief, is that attainable?
Absolutely.
Just one, one question on that, what you're talking about. You know, enforcing, enforcing policy and following it. When Monument Police Department responds along with El Paso County Sheriff, who takes over at the scene? Because it's two different agencies that are supposed to be working together.
Right, so, you know, in an incident like that, it's usually whoever's there first. And it could be that one officer, those two officers that are just going in to handle the problem. We actually train to where you're not given direction. You're not, there's really no supervision. You know what you need to do and you go do it. Now, once people like me and other people start showing up, we'll figure that out. That was one of the issues in Uvalde is that nobody knew who was in charge. Quite honestly, I'm going to tell you it's whoever steps up and says they're in charge. And if it's here in Monument, it's going to be me.
I have two things that I'd like to say. First of all, like, they're two callouts, actually. Will, thank you again for helping the seniors. They have one request. Do you make house calls? I swear, that's what they asked this morning and I'm like, no, we're not doing that. Great job. They're very appreciative and they're looking forward to the next session. And they're further looking forward to the session with the chief and his officer to do the scam. You're probably going to end up with a bigger audience than, than you thought, which is a good thing.
Yeah, we're excited. Of course. Thanks for bringing that to us.
You bet.
You have one question. Just going back to the, the water brief. Do we know how many homes that build out were projected on, say, the west side for this, for this area? Just so I can further calculate costs.
Right, yeah. Tom, I mean, what we are projecting right now is what has been approved by the town council. You know, what we were projecting previously included annexations. And so I think we've heard loud and clear from our council about annexations. And so I think right now we're projecting existing and what's being built and what's been approved by the town.
Do we, do we know the number of homes, the amount?
Well, we-
Projection.
Yeah, we don't really base on exactly the number of homes. It's, it's what we call single-family equivalents. The, on our water master plan from 2014, we were projected at about 860 acre feet of water per year, which is roughly about an additional, it's about a half acre foot per year per, per SFE. Right now, we've lowered that expectation only because there's certain property that we thought would develop and, and now we're pretty certain it's not. The, but we always have to have some extra things in there because we never know what future town councils are going to approve development-wise. So I think the number we settled on lately into this report was about 800 acre feet per year, should be a little over what we need to get the full build out. What'll happen, though, is it's entirely dependent upon annexations. So if the council approves a future annexation and it's one that's going to build, for example, 100 homes, then in my mind, before I provide a will serve letter, I have to look at 50 acre feet of water. Do we have that capacity? Or if we don't, when would that come online? Before we'll issue a letter to commit water service. So homes, you could use it, but it's not an exact equivalent. So if you look at, if you had 1,000 homes, that's 500 acre feet of water. Right now, we're looking at going from 420 to about 800 at full build out. So roughly 380 homes, 300, excuse me, 380 acre feet would give you about 760 additional homes. And that's based on what we know right now, subject to change on future board actions.
Okay. Last, I think the last comment will be about the resolution that we sent off to Mr. Cole for review and final draft. It's related to Monument's status as not being considered a sanctuary town. This is driven based off of a press conference that was held by our El Paso County Commissioners, which also indicated that the county is not a sanctuary county. Unfortunately, they did not get with any of the other municipalities, with the exception of Colorado Springs. And even as I was told by one of them, that they were given very little notice as to the context and timing of the press conference. That said, we're going to put forth a resolution to declare us not a sanctuary town. As I've discussed with our chief, there are, there's limits in what we can do as far as should a bus come and drop people off here. The town certainly does not have a budget to provide support. We also do not have our own set of facilities. We would have to partner up and work with any nonprofits and ask them also not to provide services. The one caveat to this would be children, unaccompanied minors. There are specific laws about them. And we would have to reach out to partner agencies to figure out what we would do should a bus show up and dump people off here. Anyway, the, the resolution will come out probably the, the next meeting. I would like the council to be able to see it in advance, should, so their concerns could be addressed. And whether, you know, I'm not worried about us, we're not going to talk amongst ourselves. It'll be between you and the attorney. Okay? There's, there's a possibility that other, the other mayors are doing the same thing because there is a discussion between the mayors that will be requesting the, the county commissioners to ensure that they collaborate with the municipal governments that reside within the county in the future. It would be nice. And so that, that, that letter, making such a request has been drafted and is, is now circulating amongst the, the other six, seven, seven mayors. Some of them are hard to get to because their Town Hall only opens three days, three hours a week.
Yeah, one of them anyway.
One of them. Don't, don't, don't hit that around. We don't need that.
I don't know if we could stay, but yeah, everybody off three hours a week. That'd be great. Anyway, that's all I have related to that. So for the public that's here to understand, we will have a resolution. It, it should, for us to vote on at the next council meeting, which will be on a Tuesday, because it is President's, President's Day on our normal Monday.
Right.
And we're not taking questions. So, sorry.
February 20th.
February 20th.
About this subject, is, since there's a rumor floating around that we've already received an influx, are you going to address that?
I can.
Thank you.
I've had a couple of emails. And I, I guess just to, to put it on the record, for those that are going to listen or hear or write this back, it is not my position as mayor, nor is it any position and authority of the council to expel and check papers on people that come into town. I certainly would not, it's not against the law to speak Spanish or any other language. And so we're, we're not going to play Gestapo tactics, okay? There was a complaint registered that basically two busloads of people were dropped off at our Walmart. And it was confirmed with Walmart management that there was no such event, correct, chief? But the police did go out immediately upon me getting that email. I mean, it literally took me 30 seconds to forward that to the town manager and the chief of police, and they immediately dispatched police to the Walmart. And there was no evidence of congregating people in large groups that may have fit the description of, of busloads of immigrants. There were no buses in the parking lot. There were no people congregating around the building. And Walmart management confirmed that there was no events like that that took place. There's really not much more that we could do other than act on what's been told to us and forward it off to town staff to investigate. Like, I'm sorry, we're not going to be taking questions. Okay, okay, so.
Mayor, I have an update, if you'd like.
On?
Planning Department.
Are you part of the council now?
No, I was asking for permission to make an update.
Go ahead.
I was, I was waiting on my turn. So today, we contracted with Baseline Engineering to be our consultant. We went through a, a ardent process. We, I think we had seven people that turned back. Either they requested not to turn in a proposal or they turned in a proposal. And we selected a group of individuals that worked for the town to review all of those and came up with Baseline Engineering today. Javon got out the contract. We got it to Baseline Engineering and signed that contract today. Also, last week, we advertised for a planning director. We have several applicants already put their application in. It is still open. So we expect to have more applications for that. And then I'm working with the town attorneys on an RFP for a long-term planning consultant and for a comprehensive plan.
Excellent. Thank you for that update.
You bet. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, then we are going to move into executive session. I assume you will do that here? Okay, I will-
Jurn at the end of-
Yes, that's the plan. So I will leave and and then over to Mayor Pro Tem King.